So I'd like to open up the meeting for the November 8th, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting. The first item on the agenda are the minutes for the July 12th meeting and the August 9th meeting. So has everybody read the July 12th, 2001 minutes? Do you thought the 21 I should say minutes? Does anybody have any changes? Does anybody have a motion to approve those minutes?
I thought we took care of all those last meetings.
Well, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. That's why I didn't get the minutes. I thought we took care of them. I thought we took care of both of those last time.
Yes, we did.
Okay, that's I just wanted to make sure, but if they're done, then I think we could read into the, open up the minutes or open up a public hearing for the application for 16 Meadowbrook Road for the filed by Selco. And I take it the representatives available for the petitioner, are they online?
Mr. Fenton is on his way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we are here and ready to present.
Okay, so we do have five members, so we have a full board tonight. We would just ask whoever's going to speak before they speak, give their name and address. We'll allow the petitioner to speak first and those in support of the petition to speak. And then those who are opposed can then give opposition. We will allow the petitioner to give rebuttal. There will also be time for questions and we'd also ask the people who are opposing to give their name and address. I believe a couple of things were received. There were a couple of letters received, one from an abutter and one from the, one of the assessors regarding the property that is currently in 61A. And that may require a waiver of a right of first refusal for the town because of the change in use or not first refusal, first purchase by the town because of the potential change in use. Is that, were you aware of that, Michael?
Yes, we are aware of that.
Okay, so in terms of what may be there, if in fact it is under that 61A, there is a right of first purchase in the town for any use, change in use. And whether the town will exercise that, I don't know. But that would have to be gone through and any, any variance, in my opinion, would have to be subject to the town not exercising those rights. Because if they do exercise those rights and decide to use it for agricultural purposes or conservation purposes, you know, I don't have any control over that. That would, that would create a problem on any permit. But I guess to start open the hearing, I'd ask that Bethany read the legal notice or Nina, whoever has the legal notice to read it.
Yeah, I have it right here. Oh, actually, this one, Bethany, this one wasn't listed because it was continued to the here today, right?
Ah, yes, we still need to read the legal ad into the record.
Correct.
And I don't have that one because that was from September before I started.
Do we have the legal ad?
Yes, let me see here.
I mean, it would have been probably for the regular hearing and we continue the hearing from the regular hearing, which was a couple of weeks ago. It was three weeks ago or so.
Okay. The Easton Meadows Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November 8th at six, or hmm, that's the wrong one.
Would have been up for the last hearing and.
I think it was October 18th, I remember.
Yeah, I'm just trying to access my, my computer files remotely and a little challenging, see.
I apologize for the delay. Want to get that into the record, Dean.
Can you hear me okay, Mark?
Yes.
I'm not in a great position, but I got it. Let me see if I got it right here, because I.
You have it there, Brian?
All right. Uh, yeah. So the Easton Meadows Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing November 8th at 6:30 via Zoom webinar meeting with a link attached. Case zoning, KCB 21-5, a petition for variance under Easton Meadows zoning bylaws, dimensional and density regulations, table 3.24 plus. So this is for the, so this is for the, actually, this is the later one.
Yeah, there should be two variances, one for the use variance, because a.
This is for the old farm road one.
Yeah, that's why I started reading into the record as well.
The other one should have been on for November 18th and we continued the hearing. So there was no new publication and new notice to be sent out.
Okay, I have it.
Yeah, okay.
Um, the Easton Meadows Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October 18th, 2021 at 6:30 PM via the following Zoom link. KCB 2021-4, request for use variance under the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 from Easton Meadows zoning bylaws, section 5.53A, one for a 125-foot telecommunications monopole and related equipment as 16 Meadowbrook assessors, parcel ID 78-1-0 in the Residence A zoning district and request for dimensional variance for 150 plus or minus feet relief from Easton Meadows zoning bylaws, section 5.54, speed setback requirements. Petitioner Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, 20 Alexander Drive, Long Ford, Connecticut. Information relating to this application is on file for public inspection in the Office of the Planning and Community Development, Town Hall, 60 Center Square. And it was published on September 30th, 2021 and October 7th, 2021.
So those, those meet the requirements. It was also the people within 300 feet notified?
Yes.
And we'll note for the record that we did have a meeting on the, and opened the meeting on October 18th at 6:30. Petitioner, based on the fact that we only had four members, chose to continue the meeting to have five members because he needs to have a vote of four of the five. And if there were only four, he would have had to have all four members voting in favor of it. So he continued the hearing to tonight. And we put the record in, I believe, as I said, there were two letters that were received outside of the record that I received. Are there any more, Bethany, that were received? One was from the, one of the abutters that had some questions contained in it about whether or not there were better sites, et cetera, available. And then the other one was the, from the assessor's office, one of the assessors indicating that this property is under 61A and is subject to a right of first purchase whenever the use changes from agricultural to or conservation to the cell tower.
Correct, I believe those were the only ones we received.
Okay, so there were no other ones that have been received on the record. Do we, you have copies of those present just to put them in as exhibits into the, into the record?
Yes.
So you want to put in for purposes of this, the actual petition, which should be exhibit one, you know, the request for the variance, the plans and that were submitted with it. Probably be exhibit two. Exhibit three would be the, I guess, the studies and the data that was given to us to support the fact that, you know, this is a necessary requirement for a new cell tower in that area because of the insufficient service. Those would be the, the graphs, the Horizon studies, the maps. One of the problems I had with the maps that I had was they weren't color coordinated, the ones that were sent to me. So I couldn't tell the gray, green and yellow in looking at the map. So for me, those are a little bit tough to read without the color coordination. And well, I'll need someone to help go through some of those maps, but I want to put those in as exhibit number three. And then the site plan would be exhibit four. The plans of all of the equipment components would be exhibit number five. And exhibit six would be the deed. Exhibit seven would be the permission from the owner, the Billtons, to Selco to bring this forward. Exhibit seven would be the lease between the, or the portion of the lease we are giving between Selco and the Billtons. And exhibit eight would be the letter from the assessor. And then exhibit nine would be the letter from the abutter. And if those would be so marked for anybody's references. Now, is anybody here to speak? Mr. Fenton, I guess you want to start, you speak. And if anybody has any questions, what we'll do is allow Mr. Fenton to his presentation. If anybody on the board has any questions, we, I don't know if you want to be interrupted. You want to just go forward with your presentation at the end, we'll then ask questions. Is that fair, Mike?
That, that would be fine, Mr. Chair.
So if you want to give your presentation and then we can go from there.
Thank you very much, Attorney Michael Fenton. I'm a shareholder at Shat Schwartz &amp; Fenton in Springfield. Our address is 1441 Main Street, Suite 1100. We are counsel to the petitioner, Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Mr. Chair, my partner, attorney Ellen Fryman, is going to make the presentation tonight. She was also the presenter for the planning board and will be at their next hearing. So I would ask that she be admitted into the room along with the other Verizon team members, mainly David Vivian, Greg Seeker, Michael Libertine, attorney Stephen Sobie, and our radio frequency engineers, Jay Latori and Kip DeVito, so that attorney Fryman start the presentation. And Mr. Chairman, I would also just request that, in addition to the exhibits that you cited for the record, as a part of our application for the variances, we also submitted a narrative and a legal memorandum on the question of a use variance under the Telecommunications Act. And we would ask that those also be admitted as exhibits.
That's fine, so let's make the, the narrative be exhibit, I think, number 10. And the legal opinion would be exhibit 11?
Thank you.
Have we, we haven't received anything from the town? Because I noticed the opinion was sent to the town attorney. Have we received anything from the town attorney, either yea or nay on that opinion? Bethany?
I guess it was emailed over to you, but it might have been a month or so ago.
Well, I got the, the opinion, his opinion, but did, did, did the town attorney respond?
Ah, yes, in that email.
Okay, would she was in agreement with it?
Ah, yes, I believe so.
Excuse me. Yeah, Mr. Sobie, is Mr. Sobie part of your group?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think our team is all here. Good evening, everyone. Ellen Fryman, Shat Schwartz &amp; Fenton, 1441 Main Street, Springfield. Thank you for being here tonight to, as we present our request for two variances. One is a use variance to allow the tower in a residential zone. The bylaws, the Easton Meadows bylaws now prohibit towers in the residential zone. They're limited to the commercial and industrial areas. And so I'd like to first, well, and then the second variance is for a step back. I'm going to cover the variance for, to allow the use as a tower first. And we'd like to show the zoning map so you can see the situation currently. So the areas that where a tower would be permitted is the brown, light blue and a tan area, orange tan area. So very limited area. And actually, we have towers and antennas there. So, but if you look to the, you know, the eastern part of the town, almost two thirds from north to south, there is no permitted location where we could put a tower. That's all residential, the red and the white. So currently we'd be precluded and under the Telecommunications Act, one of the, you know, requirements is that carriers be permitted to provide service, I need to provide service to municipalities. So we do go through a very extensive search process. We have to find a site that's suitable in terms of being able to connect to our existing antennas. And then we have to find one that, you know, that we have a landlord that's willing to work with us. We do, we go through, check the title, we check zoning, topography. We have wetlands, natural heritage, other environmental impact, access to utilities, geographical issues, geotechnical issues. And then we also do look at where is this tower going so that we're not in the most densely populated part of a town where we're not, you know, in neighbors' backyards, whereas, you know, we are sensitive to the visual impact. So after an extensive search, we did find this site off of Meadowbrook Road. The tower would be sited 1,000 feet back from the road. And we were able to overcome all of these other, you know, you know, conditions and that we need to in order to locate the tower and find a site. So given that it is in the residential zone, but necessarily so because there's, that's where the coverage is needed. We are here asking for a variance to allow the tower in a residential zone. There is precedence in the town. The tower on Benton Drive is in a residential zone. That was not to a variance, but actually a court proceeding that that ended up being approved to be built there. So this map was created quite a while ago, I believe, when towers were just starting perhaps. And, you know, the, the understanding that towers needed to be located throughout a municipality and perhaps in a residential zone probably weren't, wasn't a consideration at the time. So given the proliferation of the use of cell phones and the need, you know, for the, so many various uses now, the demand is there, customers want it, they expect good coverage and good service. And that's what we're here to provide. So and apparently you've got an opinion from your town attorney regarding that, which we, I don't believe we have seen. I wasn't familiar with that, but. So as far as the setback, the need for a setback variance, where our site is, the, the shape of the site is such that we really can't meet the setback requirement, which is 200% of the height of the tower. So two times the height of the tower, which would be 250 feet. That, that number, that setback number actually varies from town to town. Some is just one time the height of the tower, one, 1.25 height of the tower. I mean, it's all, you know, every town is different. And the thinking is, we expect that it's the fact that in the very, very unlikely hood that a tower were to fall over, that it wouldn't fall into a neighbor's yard. And that in fact is the case here. That would not, that would not happen. But we do have enough space between the power and the property line that if the, I don't know what the odds are, but very unlikely hood that that would happen. It would still fall within the property line of our landlord and not in a neighbor's yard. And it's just this number that was proposed and put, approved in the town bylaw to allow two times the height of the tower is that we cannot meet, so that we do need a variance to allow for, to allow for, we are 100 feet back. Well, again, let me just clarify that the setback requirement is not in the town bylaw, is not from the tower to the property line, but it's from the outside of our compound. So we have a 50 by 50 compound and then we have the tower in the middle of the compound. So from the outside of the compound to the property line, in one location it's 100 feet and another it's 105. But if you measured from the tower, we would be certainly within enough space to be able to, to meet a setback that would not, you know, not, again, not allow a tower to fall within a neighbor's yard. I do want to also explain for some of the other people that might be listening in. If we were to get this variance, which we're requesting, that's just, that basically changes our requirement. So instead of saying that we need to be 250 feet back from a property line, we would need to be, in one case, 100 feet and one 105 feet. So it doesn't change anything relative to our neighbors. They don't, that doesn't affect any kind of setback on their property. They can do everything that they can today, they will be able to do with the tower there. There's no requirement, it just shortens the setback requirement that is, would be, would govern our installation. So we do need a special permit, so we have them before the planning board. That was continued, we'll give that before them. They look at coverage issues, they look at the sighting issues and they have another, you know, another set of, of concerns that they look at. So we are going through a substantial, you know, public process here, getting all kinds of input. And we do welcome any questions. I think I'd like to show the plan so you can see where we're proposing the tower and where we have the setback need. So as you can see, Meadowbrook Road is at the bottom of the plan. And we're 1,000 feet back from Meadowbrook. And then, and the square is the compound and then the tower is in the middle. And so from the outside, again, the outside of the compound to the northern boundary line is where we would be 105 feet. Again, just to the outside of the, of the compound. And then to the easterly boundary, 100 feet. And then if you add the 50 feet that were, well, 25 feet that were within the, the tower within the compound, you know, you're more than 125 feet that you would need to cover a one-for-one setback ratio. So.
Right, but we have a two-for-one and I'm not sure why we have a two-for-one, but I, I guess, just a couple of, of issues. Was the possibility of moving the, the 50 by foot, 50 area more toward the center and away from the property line? You know, done with the, the landowner?
Well, with the landowner.
I understand you want to way back, but it could still be potentially a little closer to the light. So you wouldn't have such a short distance and move it a little bit south, not, you know, necessarily as far north, which would give the most impact to the owner who's renting the property, who's getting more of a benefit than the neighbors obviously would be getting other than, you know, the typical public use. But I just didn't know if that had been looked at as to whether or not it could have been moved a little bit further west and a little bit further south, even further less than the impact. But I, you know, I don't know the, the topography and I didn't know whether, you know, from a, you've got quite a distance away and I don't know what the, the site impacts would be from those various streets in terms of at 125 feet, because you have quite a bit of vegetation between those areas where like, I think that where that burning land is, et cetera. And other, you know, property that surrounds you is pretty heavily vegetated. And, but the Bernie, I think, is a farming area mostly.
The, I'm sorry, the.
The Bernie parcel?
I believe it's all agricultural around our area and.
I just didn't know.
We placed it so that we, where we thought it was the least, yeah, the least visual impact. So that was a concern when we placed the tower.
Yeah, I just didn't, don't know the topography, I, because I haven't walked back there in terms, and I just didn't know whether it could be moved, you know, further south and west to make it a little bit further away from, you know, neighboring properties, that's all. I'm not looking to put it too close to the street, but if you moved it, you know, say 30 or 40 feet south and, you know, 20 or 30 feet west, you'd have probably a lot less impact. I don't know, you know, in terms of distance to a neighbor's property, because at, at some point in the future, those may get developed and obviously the further away you are, the better. And that was my concern.
And I thought someone else from the team can weigh in on some of the, any issues and.
I mean, I don't know what the topography, if it's wetland and things with that, that might prevent it, I, I don't know. I didn't have a map to give me the topography there.
Okay, I, um, David, is there somebody, David or Kip can speak to that?
I, I don't have an answer for that from our perspective.
No, I just, I was just concerned, you know, because obviously you're a little closer to other potential uses of that property. And if you, I have no idea what the future is going to bring for these properties. Right now, it doesn't have that impact, but I suspect this tower potentially has a 25-year life, according to the lease that you have. And I can't tell you what it'll be there in 25 years, but there's a lot of pressure on suburban towns to develop that for housing and other types of permitted uses. And the concern, obviously, if somebody sticks subdivision or something back in there, you know, to try to keep the, the tower away from what potentially could be a subdivision in that area. But, you know, I.
I mean, we've found that that's not necessarily a negative to have a tower near property. I mean, we, the fields was constructed after the Benton Drive tower. So it's, sometimes it's seen as a plus and advantageous to.
Well, I think it's nice to, in terms of the buildings. And, and I guess the other question I had, there was one document that we received, Ellen, that indicated that, that you potentially could use existing, you know, it talked about one pole being, right, identifying the section, that you could theoretically put it on existing utility poles or something, but you would need, you know, a couple hundred of those versus one of these.
Right, yeah, we're in a location where that's not a feasible solution.
Okay, well, and that's what I just wanted to make sure. I have no idea what, what it would cost to put hundreds of those up compared to one of these.
Right, this is way more, I mean, that's just not even a possible solution here. I mean, this is not something we do without, you know, considering all other options, other facilities that we could go on to. You know, other, it's, it's last resort after exhausting our search for other, other solutions to provide service.
Mr. Chairman, this is David Vivian.
Yes.
I apologize, at least my screen seems to be freezing on the video, but I was a site acquisition for this, for this property. We tried to mitigate the visual impact because there's sort of, there's, there's a ridge that is to the rear of the property and then it goes back down again. We could move the, we could move the, the tower, you know, that, as you said, say 40 or 50 feet. If you're moving it away to the south, then you're starting to approach and open up views to residences immediately abutting the property for southwest, for south of the, yeah, southwest. So it's kind of a catch 22, you, if you move it away from something that's not there now, you're, you're going to, you're going to increase probably the, the visual impact to, to existing residences to the south.
Okay, but I mean.
The point is that we couldn't, we couldn't comply with a twice the tower height setback on the property.
Yeah, and I understand in, in terms of, of what was there. So that was another thing that I'd like. So that was another thing that I'd like to see is something you had talked about and I would require. That these be one of these self imploding towers, but I would like to know what the impact zone, if it does self implode, would be.
Uh well, generally what you do, or may it's maybe it's more appropriate to have uh our A and E speak to it. But generally what you do is you um design a failed point uh about halfway up the tower. So that if in the unlikely event that the tower does fail, it's going to fail halfway up and essentially fall on itself.
Right, but it would, and in terms of when it went roughly halfway up, it'd be about sixty-two and a half feet. And they would it then fall sixty-two and a half feet, whatever direction it falls in. Roughly, it might not be, you know, the area because obviously it would be down.
More often than not, what happens is instead, if you have that kind of a weather event, um to create this failure, um. Um, uh what happens is that it'll fail in one direction and and it won't completely snap off and 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 fall. So it's essentially going to fall on itself.
So and well, that that was a concern in Jersey area. And I guess the other question I have is at the top, you're putting a bunch of equipment um on that. Would that stuff uh stay intact during like a heavy, heavy, you know, like a hurricane type event or that type of thing? And uh with those uh things carry and do damage to any areas beyond of the immediate area? How, you know, in terms of the attachment, would those potentially blow off with the, you know, I have no idea what they're rated for in terms of. Because it looks like you have two sets of uh of um. Uh radio or transmission sort of towers, uh you know, we had like three quadrants on those per the design here. And I, those things that are at the top, uh I don't know how they're attached and whether the, you know, whether those could blow off.
Well, anything, anything's possible, but um uh the 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 attaching brackets um are are rated. Uh and again, um uh Greg Seager may be more appropriately answering this question, but they're they're rated to at least, I think it's like a category two hurricane force.
Okay. But that's what I wanted to find out, what they're rated to hold off in terms of, you know, we don't get that many of those types of storms here, but they have hit. We've had, you know, tornadoes hit uh that have been more than that, but we also do get occasional hurricanes here, not that often. But I just wanted to know what would be the wind ratings for the uh um the facilities at the top of the tower there.
Greg, feel free to uh jump in there if you have the more specifics of of what it is, but it there's, there's a specific code that they have to comply with. And I I believe it's uh in this ne- neck of the woods, um a category two hurricane.
Yeah, the uh, uh, can you hear me? With with no feedback?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, typically these towers are designed to um to 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 TIA specs, they're up to Rev H now. Um, so and I believe it's like a hundred and twenty-five mile an hour, three second wind gusts. I I don't quote me on that, I can't, you know, off of off of memory, tell you exactly what it, what, you know. What the numbers are, but I will, but I I will say that that the numbers that it's designed to withstand are specific to the region. Um, it's, it's, you know, there's, there, there's, there's codes for this and every tower gets designed um to withstand.
I I I'm glad you mentioned that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I that's what I was going to ask you. I I I'm going to assume that there are uh applicable codes uh that apply to this equipment. And can you represent that your design is in full compliance with those codes? Because that ought to satisfy us.
Well, first of all, the tower is not designed and second, yeah, and second of all, my company will not be designing the tower. But I can speak to the towers, the tower is designed by a third party engineer. Um, but speaking to how they perform their analyses, I I mean, everything is to is to TIA specs. And the 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 if the weather event to fail one of these towers is uh is. Just, it's, it's, it's over the moon. Um and.
If I, if I may, Greg, if I may, um yes, the 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 tower, uh the way that we design a tower is by taking geotechnical soil borings. We feed that to a tower developer or manufacturer and they design both the foundation and the tubular steel. And the brackets to the code, which is the I A T I A um uh standards for this, for this region for the, and it goes county by county. And as I said before, and I think Greg backed it up, it's, it's, I think it's a minimum of a class two hurricane could be higher for the brackets.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, it was a board, we would just request that, I I believe, or be one of the conditions. The top, the tower be built in the location and obviously be built to meet the standards that are required by the federal. Uh or local uh or state um requirements for the.
Oh, yeah, that's that, that's always submitted when you submit for the building per uh permit to the uh building inspector's office.
Okay.
It's construction drawings along with the structural uh tower drawings.
But it just, I wanted to make sure that that was built in, the self collapsing is going to be a requirement, that it collapses, but you know, it has a a breakpoint. Within there to to limit the, you know, the distance that the uh tower potentially could fall um if we're.
Yeah, just, just so the board's aware, you don't actually design a fail point per se. What you do is instead is you over over design in one direction. And so in this case, it would be to the north, you'd have extra plating, so that if it were to fail, it would fail inward onto the property.
Yeah, and that's, we just want to make sure that that's what's going to happen, that it will fail. If uh in terms of, I mean, obviously, the best area the fall would be would be in a southwesterly direction, which would have the least impact. On on any of the neighbors, would have probably the biggest impact on the owner of the property, but he's also the one who's leasing it. That, you know, should be able to absorb that. Yeah, he's getting some benefit different than everybody else.
All right, how do we keep going here?
Um.
Well, I I think we've prevent presented the information and open to any questions.
Well, but you know, my my view, subject to hearing from the public, is that, you know, pursuant to what Mark said, it's my expectation that. Uh the facility will be constructed in accordance with any applicable, any and all applicable laws and codes. Um and frankly, I imagine the planning board, that's really kind of the thing they focus on. Uh we're really more land use and probably ought to be concerned less with the pole and how it's put together and more with. Whether or not this use is appropriate at this location.
Yeah, that that the only reason I was concerned about it obviously is because the the, we're giving a variance from the two hundred and fifty fall zone. Uh so that's why I was uh in, you know.
No, I get it. I I you're right, and you're right to do that.
Yeah, and it's, and you know, in terms of the the necessity, I had trouble reading the plans because I didn't have a color, the proper color coded. So when I was reading, um it was just hard for me to understand because I couldn't understand which was green, which was gray and which was yellow. Uh on the service areas. But it looks like there's a a significant, there's a gap that exists between the coverage. The other thing I didn't see, and it appears to be going i- in the direction, is a lot of, I see a lot of advertising now for five G. And there's nothing in any of this stuff here that addresses the five G and I and I I'm not an expert in terms of the the code coverage.
But with all, but with all due respect, I don't know what that has to do with anything we're talking about here, you know.
Well, no, it's just in terms of will they be requiring more uh towers if it's a higher frequency? Because they don't travel such a large distance, that's a concern that I have, Dan, in terms of how many towers are we going to be looking at?
Oh, well, they're here for approval on one tower, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Right, can they get a another tower without a subsequent approval?
No.
Okay, so let's just deal with the tower with that.
Oh.
You guys have presented all of your information, maybe the appropriate thing is to ensure, because I know there's members of the public that want to speak to this, am I correct about that?
Yeah, are there anybody else to speak in favor?
Maybe as we're waiting for um others to speak in favor, one question on the steps you took to find this location. You described um the 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 measures you took to find other properties that would not have required a variance.
David, you want to speak to that?
Uh, right, uh, we were not able to find um uh. Any parcels uh in the in the designated search area that would work for RF that could comply with it twice the tower height setback.
Or the use variance, I think is what I think uh Charles was concerned about.
Oh, well, as far as the use variance itself, uh yeah, no, that's, I think, uh attorney uh. Fryman spoke to that, uh that it's not allowed anywhere on the entire eastern side of uh uh town.
Without a variance.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that the use, the use variance is, I think that that makes perfect sense, but. I I I thought I saw somewhere in the materials that were presented that there are other options that would not have required. A setback variance. Am I incorrect in? If you could describe those lots and what you did to seek out those those lots and seek approval with the property owners.
Uh, right, well, well, uh the the two uh other raw land sites um that I looked at. Um, one was to the rear of uh the Baptist church and then one was the Bernie property. Um, and now either one of those, um, well, the tru- the church was initially interested and this was with a somebody previous to me. And then they, then they ended up declining um and the Bernie, Bernies just never responded. I think both of those would also require use variance and both would require, well, the same, the uh uh setback variance as well.
They would both require a setback variance?
Yes.
So. So there's no other properties in this area of town that would have the appropriate setbacks? Is that what I hear you saying?
Not in this, not in this specific uh uh area of town, right? Because you'd need, I'd have to do the math, but it's uh you'd need a minimum of of uh. Uh, let's see, uh two hundred and fifty feet, five hundred feet in every direction. Um, generally, that's going to be um a pretty large parcel.
So i- in my understanding that there is no site that makes sense either from an availability standpoint or an economic. Viability standpoint that does not require uh relief or that does not require you to be in a residential zone?
Right, no matter, no matter what, uh we would need to be in a residential zone um uh to uh. Provide the coverage that we're seeking for this set uh part of town. It's all residentially zone here.
And I might add that um the one advantage of this site too is the fact that we were able to set it back from the road. We are able to set it back from from a densely populated area as far as, you know, a number of houses that would see it. Um, so the fact that it is agricultural land around us is usually, you know, to us a a positive that it's not going to be, you know, in someone's yard. So that was deemed to be a, you know, advantageous for this site.
Um, Mark, I have Mr. Uh Bernie.
Bernie.
Yeah, if you'd like to speak, just give your name and address, Mr. Bernie.
Give me a second.
This is Mr. Bernie available?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, my name's John Bernie. My address, one forty-one Meadowbrook Road, East Long Meadow. I own the property to the rear, to the north of the subject property. And um I'd like to make a couple of points. One, it's uh reading through the uh town bylaws, it's very clear that it's the town's responsibility. In a situation like this to preserve property values. And by taking a property that's eleven hundred and fifty feet deep and to put, present a tower on the back hundred feet of it. Is not being fair to the abutting property owners on the rear of the property. There's going to be a negative impact to our properties and um. You with a with an, I I don't understand why it needs, why they say that the property can't conform to the two hundred and fifty foot setback, move it up. It can be halfway, five hundred feet from Meadowbrook Road and still be the same distances from the abutting houses is what this proposal is.
Yeah, Mr. Bernie, and I don't know if you've seen the plan, but it with a two hundred and fifty foot radius around. This lot is only maximum, it looks like on the road, three hundred and sixty feet. Um, you would need a five hundred foot area to meet our requirements.
I unders- I understand that, but the two hundred and fifty radius encumbers now three properties.
Right.
Whereas it would only be encumbering one property if it was moved to the south by half the distance of the property.
Well, that's what I asked, if it could be moved further south and west.
I'm not talking thirty or forty feet, I'm talking halfway up the property and it would still be the same distance from the next, from the neighboring houses. It's a very unfair proposal to ex- to expect the people, the abutters on the rear of the property to accept the real estate depreciation. The fellow that's receiving, the property owner that's receiving the monthly income should also accept the real estate depreciation.
No, no, and I understand that, Mr. Bernie, I also don't know for a fact, I haven't seen anything from anybody, that it in fact results in a depreciation of. Uh, you know, the these towers result in a depreciation of the valuable abutters properties, I just don't know.
Well, I think, I think that's fairly clear, I think that's why there's all this conversation.
Yeah.
It's very uh, it's very clear in the town bylaws that the responsibility of the town is to preserve property values. And by putting this uh a hundred feet, it's an eleven hundred, the subject property is eleven hundred and fifty feet deep. To put the property on the back hundred feet of the property is very unfair.
No, and that's why.
I'm, it would put the town in a very bad position if 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 the abutting property owners. Can prove that their value, their property has been depreciated because of this cell tower. And I don't think it would take a uh too many appraisers to be able to approve that.
And that was my question in terms of relocating that tower, if it could possibly be done. Further south and west on that parcel so that the impacts would be suffered more by the uh parcel owner. Uh than the abutters. Um however, I I'm not familiar with the topography because I need to go back there.
It's it's wide open, it's farmland, the topography, the high part of the property is up by the house. The 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 reasonable part would be to put a tower on the high part of the property, not the low part of the property.
Right, and I don't know what the impact on the other two, you know, there's homes on Meadowbrook and Summers Road and the impact on them. So I, you know, I'm gonna try to limit the impact on them as well, I mean, they're landowners as well.
Well, I'd I'd like to make another point too. Because the property is currently farmed, it's the same zoning as the subject property. It's all ag residential zone.
Right.
So to say because the because the land is currently farmed, it should have some kind of a different impact than if there were houses there. Is not being fair to the property owners.
No, no, and that's why I asked about it, because I don't know what the next twenty-five or so years where that tower is going to be there. That's why I thought possibly, but you know, that's something that the that has to be worked out between the landowner uh and Selco. In terms of trying to relocate it further south and west to try to lessen the impact um. You know, there still would need to be a variance, uh because I I think on either side, you can't meet the two fifty, we'd have to grant it, but it wouldn't be such a large variance.
Well, you would, right now, right now, you're impacting three abutting property owners with a two hundred and fifty foot radius. If you were to move the property three hundred feet to the south, you'd only be impacting one property owner, which is a family member.
Well, yeah, well, I don't know, you've got two people that I know are on Summers Road that might be impacted if you move it further south and west and you move it three hundred feet in. Um.
It would be the same distance, the same distance as the proposal now going to Silver Lane in the. It would be the same distance, the same distance as the proposal now going to Silver Lane and the houses in the back.
Right. No, and that's concern. I just don't know what the exact distance, because I don't have those dimensions. Um, and I'm looking on the, the lot, obviously, the eastern east line is a larger line because of the, uh, the way the, the parcel reads, um, you know, the other side has, uh, isn't as, is deep.
Well, I, I, I think it's very clear with a subject property that's eleven hundred and fifty feet deep and to propose the tower on the back hundred feet of the property. And so it has virtually no impact on the subject property, but does impact the, the, uh, abutting properties to the north is a very unfair proposal. And for the town to vote positive on this, uh, I, I think is a very, very bad mistake.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I don't have any evidence before me other than conjecture that this is going to adversely affect the values of, and, and I don't have a problem continuing if, if someone wants to produce evidence, because I'm not an expert at valuation, uh, as to whether or not a cell tower adversely impacts the values of abutting properties or.
Sure we should be in the business of deciding that.
No, but on the other hand, if we're going to be deciding that it's there, there has to be some evidence before us other than conjecture.
Well, no, and I agree, but I, I, I think, uh, I, I think that as a board, we really just need to look at this, you know, from a land use standpoint and apply the law uh, and, and, and the chapters that deal, the Communications Act that deals with this and, and, and approach it that way. I, and I don't mean to suggest that Mr. Bernie's, uh, uh, issues aren't valid, uh, not at all. I, I'm just suggesting is we're, we're going to make a mess of this if we start wading into, you know, valuations of land and engineering of a tower and where it should be on the site. The question was asked, I think, by you, Mark, initially, uh, whether this tower could be cited somewhere else. I never heard a very clear answer from the petitioner about that. Um, i- if there's some kind of detailed, uh, engineering study, which I would imagine there is, I perform them when I build buildings, uh, that show where this, all of the different potential locations on this site where this thing could have gone to meet radio frequency emission standards that they need to meet, uh, proximity issues they need to meet, geotechnical considerations. Yeah, it would be good for us to see that. And if that has been given to us, and I haven't seen it, that's my fault.
No, I haven't. That's why I asked the questions, Dan, whether it could be located first, further south and west.
We'd be willing to do that. We can show the different perspectives of what, you know, where we look at. Why we ruled out the area and our concern was the visual impact on existing homes. So, and that's why we placed it where we did.
Right, and I thought if it, if it moved, because I don't know what the future we're bringing.
Well, what I'm suggesting is it probably would be beneficial for this panel, for the board here, uh, from the engineer that, that did the analysis, why he cited the building where he did. I think we'd all feel uh, potentially better if somebody said to us, we tried it over here and it didn't work for this reason, we tried it over here and it didn't work for this reason. I imagine no matter where you put it, you're gonna, you're gonna cause an equal and opposite reaction, and this is probably based on my knowledge of engineering, the best place for it. But if there are those on the board who are not sure of that, they need to be convinced and, and you guys need to convince them.
It's the best place for it because it's the furthest away from the subject property. Now, let's be fair about this. You got an eleven hundred and fifty foot property and you're putting it a hundred foot from the rear property line? Does not make sense.
Well, it makes sense to the guy doing it. I mean, No, I understand, and, and you need to, I think, to be fair, consider that if you were him, or if you owned a piece of land and there was someone who was going to pay you a, an amount of money to put some equipment on it for a use that didn't involve commerce, uh, you know, with a building and a store or an office building, you would seek to preserve the utility of your own land and do the same thing. So I appreciate, John, what you're saying and how it affects you, but we also need to be, you know, mindful of, of people's property rights.
Right, but the, the town has, has two major responsibilities. One, to make sure that all the other opportunities have been exhausted. And if, opportunities meaning existing towers, existing poles, that has to be exhausted first. It's very clear in the town bylaws. Second, preserve property values. And by approving this a hundred foot off the rear property line, you are not preserving property values.
And I don't know that, Mr. Bernie. I mean, it, it, you're saying that, and that may well be true, but I don't have anything from any expert telling me that a, a cell tower acts negatively on property values.
Cell tower in your backyard?
I'm not saying it wouldn't, I just don't know what impact it has on value. I'm not an expert on valuation.
And we're going, we're going around in a circle with this anyway. I, I, I think it, I, I think John made good points that deserve to be addressed, but, uh, we probably have other people here that want to be heard from.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition or have questions?
Yep, I have Mr. Abear.
Mr. Abear, you can speak.
Yeah, it takes him a second to get into, uh, into the Zoom, Mark.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
That's Phil Abear, seven Silver Fox Lane.
Yep.
Uh, I am against both variances for, for somewhat same, same issues that you're presenting here. Uh, as far as seeking out other sites, is it just East Long Meadow that could put a, a cell phone tower in, or can they put it over in Connecticut side or, or Hampden side?
That's part of the issue that they've had. Um, there are ones currently in Hampden, don't, that don't adequately serve that area of East Long Meadow. Um, and I'm not sure it's close enough to, um, the Summers location, um, to give, uh, you know, enough area to do coverage from what I could see on the, the materials that were submitted.
They seem to have more area, open area on the other side of the, the state line than we have putting it into our residential neighborhood.
And, and I understand, but I don't know that if they, they locate it in that area whether or not that would cover the service area, because obviously one of the issues they're concerned about uh, is the, um, availability of not only cellphone, but, you know, you know, uh, internet connections, uh, in that area of East Long Meadow, um, that aren't currently served by, uh, they just upgraded the, the, uh, communications facilities at the closest one in East Long Meadow, which is on top of the water tower, um, off of, uh, Delete Prospect Street.
Yes.
Um, and that was upgraded and still doesn't supply sufficient, um, coverage. Uh, I don't know about the Hampden ones, whether those have been upgraded. There was no information given on those one way or the other.
Or even Summers.
Well, the Summers locations are even further away in, from this location than the Hampden ones are.
Well, even to the point, was there any properties available on the Summer side of East Long Meadow that they haven't addressed in their presentation that might be available other than this one property? They, they, they said they searched other properties in East Long Meadow. Did you, did, did they search other properties in Hampden and Summers or other than East Long Meadow?
Well, they're trying to.
Haven't heard that in the, in their presentation.
Well, the, one of the things that was in their presentation is that the, the current towers that are in Summer, uh, in Summers, but in, in Hampden are not providing sufficient coverage, uh, and, uh, reliability in that area in East Long Meadow. And they're closer than, than any of the towers it would be in Summers.
Could they be upgraded to?
That, that hasn't been addressed. That's the only question I, I have.
That's a question I have.
Yeah, and that hasn't been produced here. I don't know if we could get any evidence from, uh, Verizon in terms of those other towers, if they were upgraded, whether that would increase and what, uh, they could give us some indication if those were upgraded, um, whether that would close that gap, um, in coverage, because you already have towers there that, uh, potentially could have less of an impact and meet the coverage. But if it, if it can't meet the coverage, then we're going to be, end up with some sort of a tower uh, in the southeastern part of East Long Meadow, um, to service that area.
Mark, I, 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 I'm just going to add this only because I used to work for the phone company in another life, and I have a, I don't have any knowledge of what this stuff is today that these folks are, are putting up, but um, I, I think it, it's a fair assumption that Verizon would not go to the trouble to design and, and, uh, install a tower at this location if it didn't have technical, uh, reasons and benefits. They, 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 if they could upgrade an existing facility to achieve the same result, trust me, they would.
It's a lot cheap.
So, yeah, I, I mean, they're do- whether or not this is the right place for us to approve this is a different question, and that's why we're here tonight. Whether or not this is technically the right option for Verizon is really not something we should be debating. Um, you know, as long, as long as, uh, as, as long as we know we're dealing with, with professionals. I, you know, I, I think the issue really needs to be, should we allow them to do this? To hear the answer. I mean, your, your, your background and history is relevant, but I think we'd like, I'd like to hear the answer, you know, it's a good question.
Yeah, no, I just, I, and I don't have a problem. I just would like to see some information as to the tower, even if they upgraded them, whether they would or wouldn't serve a sad area or whether we'd still have.
And I, and I think that's great, but we've asked this question, I think, three or four times. It doesn't seem to be anybody at Verizon jumping in with, with technical answers to these questions.
Can I, can I speak for a moment?
Yes.
Mr. German, I, I just want to tell you that as far as I'm concerned, I'm against a change of use of, of both of these requests, the change in use and the setback. Being in, in residential A and a new homeowner, homeowner here for past two years, uh, most of the issues that were presented when, when building in my, my house, on issues with the zoning bylaws on, on exemptions to certain specific items of a site plan was always refused, always refused. And I'm not the only one. So I bought into residential A with the knowledge that, hey, the integrity of maintaining the rules for residential A, we're going to be in existence when I purchase the property. So I'm, I'm against issuing variances for, for either one of these, these.
Right, and, and I understand, and, and there are federal laws that if there are.
And I, I understand the federal laws, uh, to some degree, and, and that's an issue in itself that we could take up in the planning board. And that, but the, the real issue is the request for variance for, 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 uh, the, the, the change of use and, and a setback, as, as Mr. Plunkton stated before. And, and my, my personal view is I'm against issuing a variance for either one of those.
Right.
I just want to go on record as that.
Yeah, and per the map, I, I assume you're one of the people that's, I think it had well over seven hundred feet.
I'm in that range of the tower.
Right, right, no, and I understand, but it, it's well over seven hundred feet.
Well, that, that there will be other issues brought up in, in the planning board that, that I think are, are more relevant than on this board from an operating standpoint, and I don't think that's the issue in front of you people.
Yeah, it just, there were maps given to us that had it, and they had a distance showing the nearest properties, uh, that would be impacted. And I believe the closest ones were like seven hundred feet.
That, that's correct. It's one six hundred and seventy feet, another one seven hundred feet, so quite, quite a distance from a, from a house.
Can you, don't you have one of your RF engineers here tonight?
We do. I, I've been trying to, I, I did, I wanted to let everybody speak, but yes, we have.
Well, the reason I think it's important, I mean, uh, Mr. Gray and others have asked, you know, more than once for somebody to justify this location. So why don't you guys do that?
Had a chance to jump in, but we can jump in right now, and we have actually two RF engineers on, um, that can address those questions. Kip, if you want to, or Jay, um, Kip, you're ready?
Yeah, hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Kip DeVito. I'm an RF engineer for Verizon. Uh, for the record, I live at eighty-seven Turkey Hill Road in Chester, Connecticut. Um, I could answer, oh, do you mind if I share my screen? I think it might help clear up some of the questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Kip.
Okay, um, so this is a necessity case that we, uh, submitted for the site and, um, just on the front, obviously you see it's a bird's eye view of the proposed site along with the neighboring, the first year neighboring sites. Um, if I, I think that in the best.
Hey, Kip, can I, can I interrupt? These are, these are documents that are already provided, right? I, I've, I've got this in my packet, right?
Yes, sir, yep. Um, I, I think the, the best thing to show, um, here will, will help cover things up a lot. Now, these are coverage plots. Um, coverage is a term that we use to, uh, talk about the existence of wireless service in the area. As you can see here on the left, this is our current seven hundred megahertz, uh, coverage in the area. Our seven hundred megahertz is the, you call it the base layer for just coverage, people getting onto the network. Um, it propagates the most because it's, um, the lowest frequency. Uh, on the, right here, you see the proposed site, um, being activated and being on air. And as you can see, in the eastern part of East Long Meadow, there aren't any sites that we have, so all the services being provided in here is being provided mostly from the Hampden sites out here. Now, to answer one specific question, now, if these sites out here were upgraded, which we're working on them, always, but currently they, they are not right now, but we will be upgrading all our sites in time. Um, it doesn't change the footprint of these sites, so, um, in, in short answer, no, upgrading these sites will not provide a more reliable indoor and outdoor coverage to this part of East Long, East Long Meadow. Um, so, and, and here's, um, the legend here, so you see green.
I mean, this is much more helpful because the plans we were given that were black and white plans, so that I had no way of determining what was what color on the maps. So this, this is much clearer that you're obviously getting a significant, uh, significantly larger in-building coverage uh, for anybody in the future who may build there that you don't currently have.
Right, especially in today's world, there's, there's a lot more people working from home. There's plenty of businesses here. There are plenty of travelers on the roads, um, so being able to provide more indoor coverage, better in-car service as well, um, will really help, help the area and, and being able to um, provide more reliable service from the site will then allow the neighboring sites to work more efficiently, not having to handle so much traffic. So it's not just providing a more robust network for the eastern part of East Long Meadow, but it's also the surrounding area. Uh, people are going to experience a much better, uh, service.
And Kip, if I, if I read that with a new green, does that also encompass yellow in, in that area in the gray? If it's in the green, is it sort of like encompassing if it's shown in green? Because it, you know, before it's yellow, now it's green. Does green include car coverage and, and street coverage?
Yes, sir, yep.
Okay, so when the, the green is the, the ultimate coverage, gray is the least coverage and yellow is, is a little bit more. Does yellow include the gray?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood the plan, um, accurately.
And, and this is the site, the proposed site by itself with seven hundred megahertz. So it's the, the footprint that it's, uh, going to have by itself. Um, this is twenty-one meg, twenty-one hundred megahertz. Um, so this is, we, we use many different frequencies with our equipment, and this is just layering these frequencies to provide better service. Um, since it's a higher frequency, it, it doesn't have the propagation patterns that seven hundred does, so it's a little bit tougher to get out there. Um, but as you can see, again, with twenty-one hundred megahertz, it's going to have a, a, a great, uh, improvement on the network in this area. And this is again twenty-one mega, twenty-one hundred megahertz by itself.
And I guess, Mr. Bernie had questions, uh, Mr. Abear in terms of locations, uh, because this doesn't show anything in Summers.
Right, so the reason, I mean, we're here specifically for the eastern part of East Long Meadow. Putting a site anywhere else isn't.
Are there any sites currently in Summers that are close by East Long Meadow?
Um, Jay, I'm sorry, do you, do you know the answer to that?
Because this map is.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, this is Jay Littori, RF engineer for Verizon, uh, home address is one two two Forest Hills Road in Springfield. Uh, we do. Uh, we do have two facilities in Summers, but uh the closest facility is on Route one ninety. Uh, if you know like where Sunny Place is.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's, it's a couple of miles away and, and uh I'll, I'll hand it back to Mr. DeVito.
So it's a by, it's a, he's a couple of miles from the uh, uh, the, the state border.
Alright, so that would seem to, seem to underscore that this parcel or this general vicinity is where this tower needs to go. Uh, I think now what's important is that we understand. Uh, why this particular piece of dirt on this site is where this thing has to go. And I think the board would appreciate hearing from whoever it is that determine that that's where it should go. Uh, explain to us the reasons for that. Since we have at least one uh member of the public who objects to the location and, and has been pretty clear about why. He, he feels as though uh the owner of the property has uh reserved. Uh, the, 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 that portion with the least amount of utility to him. Uh, for this use, uh, which is causing the greatest level of consternation for his neighbor.
Uh, there might be someone who's better able to speak about the specific.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Vivian. Uh, may I try to address that?
Yep.
Um, uh, if somebody could just bring up the site plan, uh, what we would do. Uh, or could consider easily is uh moving, moving the uh tower site uh to the south. I wouldn't suggest south and west. Cause then you're starting to move closer to the residences over on the west.
Right, I mean, I'm not looking for a huge moving south and west, more south, but a little bit west. Because of the east property line is to, to not impact as much the people on the east to put it more central on the parcel. Um.
And we do have an easement that we have to be concerned about right there.
Right, and so, and so what I was gonna suggest is that we could, we could move it um. Probably about a hundred feet or so, as long as the tower site itself does not impact the uh, the drainage easement that uh runs from the north uh east.
Yeah, I agree.
So you could probably move it about a hundred feet south and then you've got a full twice the tower height setback to the northern properties.
Correct, and that, that's, that's what I'm thinking in terms of moving it to the south and a little bit to the west. Because no matter where you move it, you're never gonna meet the two fifty east-west because it's just a three hundred and sixty foot wide parcel. So you don't have five hundred feet. So no matter where you put it, it's gonna impact, you're gonna need a variance there, but you, you might not need the variance uh from the north property line is what I'm thinking.
Right, and, and that, that can, uh, I'm sure that that can be done. Uh, we would just be cutting over from uh the proposed access road, say a hundred feet uh further south. I would, I would say probably.
And you would have to run your utilities less as far as well.
Because the, the, the property that is still impacted on the variance at that point is owned by the, the building's nephews.
Right.
So I, I would, I would suggest if you're gonna move it, that you move it, say, whatever it is to get that twice the tower height setback. Uh, just directly south.
Right, so.
Yep.
So that you have the impact would only be the east and west of Butters, um, would be the ones who would be impacted. So that, that's all I'm looking for is whether or not that site has. It's, to me, it looks like it's put in the far north easterly corner, um, that it, you know, um, that has more of an impact on, on at least the, the. You know, you've got the two Butters to the north and, and the Butters to the east, whereas if you put it to the south more. Uh, it would just affect the east and west of Butters uh of the property, but would also probably be more than the hundred and five. Uh, and hundred feet that you have before, you'd only be, you know, you would be, if you sort of stuck it to the middle of three sixty, be about a hundred and eighty. Uh, roughly, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood would be a lot, you know, larger area in, in separation of distance, so it'd have less of an impact. Than this proposal would have, that's all. But I don't know the topography. I don't know the wet, if it's all wetlands. I mean, I, you know, I just, I have no idea.
It's, it's, it's not wet there. Um, the wetlands are, are actually to the southwest parcel, parcel of the uh, uh, property. But um, uh, we were, we're gonna be crossing that, that easement will be, you know, uh, running conduit through there.
Right, but you're already running it. I could see, I mean, and obviously running it a shorter distance. Uh, northerly would save you some money. You might just have to move it a little bit further uh westerly, you know. And I think that distance would probably, you know, result in some sort of the savings. But on the other hand, you've got to get the agreement of the, uh, the current owner.
Yeah, I, I, and again, I, uh, I, the current owner is probably not gonna have any problem with moving it due south. If you start to move it more to the center, then it does start to impact.
Yeah, no, I don't want it right in the center of the lot, but I'm just saying more toward the south. Um, and to give you the two hundred and fifty feet um to the northerly uh property line.
Yep, that could be done easily.
What, what's, what's the problem with moving it to the west?
I, I would like to see a little further west just to give, have a less of an impact on both east and west. You know, have a little bit more of an impact, but it would be more of a, an equal impact to the people to the west and to the east. Uh, well, more toward the center, that's all. I mean, toward this, you know, toward the east-west center. Um, it wouldn't be in the center north-south, but it would be more east-west center, which would give you potentially a hundred and eighty feet of distance between. The tower itself roughly, uh, and the uh, the boundaries and, you know, the east-west boundaries of, of the par, parcel. That's all.
You know, one of the things I think I would have appreciated here is if Verizon had come in. Uh, with uh, or, or, and perhaps we can ask him to do this, to identify every. Spot on this parcel of land where this tower could be erected. With us granting essentially the same approvals regardless of where that was. And that we then let the property owners nearby, some of whom have spoken here tonight. Let them weigh in on what they think, that if they have to live with this, what would they prefer? I, I think that that would be the fair, fair way to do this if we're gonna approve this.
Well, it's hard to, I mean, we have to pick a spot because we have.
Yeah, you have to, you've gotta give us a proposal. We can't, you know, have a, a roaming site. So I would just request that it be further. Um, if possible, be further south and west. Um, it doesn't have to be in the center of the lot, but I, I would like to have. Um, you know, it's, is, is much away from the northerly property as possible because there's a lot of land there um that could be used.
Uh, I still, I don't understand why you couldn't effectuate what I'm talking about. If they, if they, we continued this and they showed us.
Oh, yeah.
Why this site is the only site that makes sense.
No, no, and that's fine.
And, and, you know, and then also showed us sites that could also make sense. And let people weigh in on that. I mean, after all, uh, we're being asked to grant an approval in a piece of residential land, which has always been kind of sacrosanct in most towns. Uh, with a change of use. And I think, uh, I think we owe, uh, we owe the people who live over there that, that, that.
Yeah, no, and I don't have a problem, but I want a concrete proposal then, you know, before us that we do and then have people comment on where they can do it and let Verizon pick. Um, you know, of, of. One or more locations if they want to, uh, and, you know, where that could go engineering wise. I just don't know.
I mean, I think we could show one or two. I don't think we could do multiple.
No, no, you can have more.
However many there are, Ellen, you know, just, just so that, a lot of questions have been asked here tonight. It seems to me that you guys could have head off. You know, i, 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 if, if, if you guys had made a presentation where you showed us, we're putting it here. Technically, because there's nowhere else for it to go to do what needs to be done. And we're putting it here on this particular site for this reason and that reason. I think some of the folks. You know, wouldn't be asking you to tell us that now and you wouldn't, we wouldn't continue.
Well, I, I do want to say, I mean, this wasn't just arbitrary. A lot of thought and work went into this and, um, you know, so obviously to us, this was the best location. If there's others that other, you know, people want to weigh on and give reasons, that's, that's fine. We'll, we'll consider that for sure. But I, but again, this was not just, you know, haphazardly decided.
No, no, and I understand that.
A lot of thought and work put into what we.
No, I'm, Ellen, I'm, I don't doubt that for one second. As I said, I used to work for a public utility and I, I know you guys aren't kidding. But, but it's, but you still need to let the public know that. Not, not everybody here knows what you did or how hard you worked or understands the technical nature of cell phone towers or any of that stuff.
And I understand, and, you know, we've done this enough and everywhere in the country that we know that we, you know, that we do listen to the neighbors and to the boards that we.
And that's all I'm asking.
Consider comments and input and um, that's why we're here.
Now, before we, we do that, that's what I would ask, that we continue the hearing to allow, cause you, you're gonna have to work with the owner. He's have, someone's gonna have to agree on locations. It's gonna do it if you're gonna do that and then give some presentations that the owner could live with, that Verizon could live with. Um, and then we could get input from the public on those. But I also want to see if there's any other people that are here that want to speak in opposition. We've only heard from two. I don't know if there's other people out there that uh. Are interested in, in piping in.
Yeah, we do have three more.
Okay, I'd like to hear, hear them.
Dr. Labar.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Yes, how are you? We can hear you.
Good evening.
My name is Daniella Labar. I live at nineteen Silver Fox Lane. My house is pictured on most of those maps that are being shown. Six hundred and seventy feet. Um, I'm opposed to this um for several reasons. And I know that you guys are here just to change a zoning law, but you know, there are a lot of questions that we had at our last meeting that didn't get answered. Things like who's gonna benefit most from this tower and Verizon and their representatives weren't uh sure about that. There was a question about benefiting more people outside of East Long Meadow than inside of East Long Meadow. Um, the second piece to that was they said that they've done their due diligence and finding other places to put it. They have not. There are two people who could speak to that, who are willing to put it on their properties that have much more space, not in a residential zone in the area that they're looking for as well. And the third piece that I can't move away from as a mom and as a resident and as a um, an employee of the town here is there are some real safety concerns that. Allegedly are put forth and there are some laws in place by the federal government that keeps people safe. But there is not enough long-term research to show how five G affects people who live around these towers. And there's a school. Within less than a mile from where they're putting this tower. And there's research that shows, and there's two current lawsuits happening against Verizon Wireless. That says that people are getting very sick from these towers and you're gonna affect thousands of childrens in this immediate area. I mean, there's a school right there. Not to mention, there is zero place stand on that piece of property that you can put that, that won't affect somebody. It's in the middle of a field. So I appreciate that, I really do. But I think that's part of the reason and part of what they said at the last meeting was the reason they chose that space. Was because it would be the least noticeable. And they, they showed these, you know, aerial pictures and kind of a balloon and all of these great things. But all I know is that my house and the tower can be seen in every one of those pictures. So even though they say it's gonna be hidden, it's not. Um, you can see it from every.
Well, any hundred twenty-five foot tower, you know, unless it's heavily forested, it is gonna be very visible.
Exactly. And I, and I also want to mention, I appreciate that there's agricultural land around this tower. But that agricultural land around this tower is used for family functions. I mean, Cindy uses her property for uh part of the year to let families enjoy, you know, activities. John may also use his property in the back there to do family picking for uh strawberries, things like that. That property is not, not used. You know what I mean? It's not like you're putting this tower somewhere where there aren't gonna be people around it constantly, cause there are. I mean, I see that. I mean, I see it from my backyard. So, you know, if you're gonna allow somebody to put a tower on a residential zone, you're really opening up a can of worms to allow other people to do things on residential zones. That we should be trying to preserve in East Long Meadow. And, you know.
And we agree with you to that extent, but we also don't want to uh have the government step in like they did on the other tower. And jam it down our throats and we have no protections for anybody in the town. Some court sticks it down our throat. I'd rather us make the decision that. Has impacts on some people, but we try to lessen whatever the impact is going to be and have it the best location possible to meet. The objections of the, of the people in East Long Meadow. Serve the people in East Long Meadow who wanna have uh wireless communications uh available in their homes and in, and, you know, around their homes. Uh, because, you know, everybody uses computers and et cetera. And unfortunately, there have to be cell towers that serve those. Uh, and uh, you know, we want to try to help people there because people get upset when, if you can't, you know, get access to computer. Uh, from your home, you're gonna be upset. And we want to be able to have that available to people, but I also want to have the least impact. On the, the innocent people, so to speak, um, that haven't, you know, requested this, uh, that are gonna get some help by this as part of the general public. But also not have to have the, the biggest. That's why I thought if they, if this site was the best. Now, I'm not aware of other sites. Um, I don't know, I, have they been offered the sites? I don't know where the sites are. There may be a, a whole set of new neighbors if those other ones. Uh, offer up their sites uh for locations, because I don't know where they are and what impact that'll have on other uh people who. Live closer to those towers and, than, you know, you or I. Um, so I, you know, I don't know what those impacts will be. But there, there will be impacts on people and I'm trying to minimize uh whatever we have in terms of any damage to any of the. Members of the public at large to serve as many people in, 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 in the town as possible so that everybody has coverage. Um.
Mark, can I add just one more thing to that? So the coverage map that they're showing you for this presentation does not match the coverage map that you get on Verizon. Or when you call Verizon to ask for updated um coverage of like service in the area, it doesn't match. They're not saying that we have any gaps in service whatsoever when you talk to Verizon representatives and the maps that these lovely people.
Yeah, well, the, the one they've given us, I mean, I've gotta, you know, go by what the engineers give me that basically indicate that. And, and I, you know, I'm not the expert at, at the maps. I take them uh that they're not making this stuff up. Um, you know, in terms of what they've given, they've represented that these are shortfalls in the coverages in that area. And clearly in building coverage in that area is very limited. Um, and I'm just concerned, you know, in terms of. The people that live in that area or work in those areas uh have limited in building coverage um for that area, both now and in the future. Um, and I do, I do worry about the future because all this is all based on four G. And it seems to me that four G may be an obsolete technology within the next four or five years. I, I don't know, but we have to go by the proposal that they're giving us. Um, but that's a concern that I have that will, you know. Whether this uh will be, is the best location, if we're gonna have to have a proliferation of towers to serve that area if we go to five G. Did you understand what I'm saying? Um, I want to have the least number of towers as possible that will serve the needs of the public. And meet the requirements that they have to provide for their service. You know, because that's, that's a concern that I have. I don't want to have to have a proliferation of towers because we go to five G and this will lessen the coverage. And now we have to put in two or three more towers. That, which, that, that would concern me. So, but that's, that's what I'm trying to get answers for, if I can get those.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Dave Vivian, uh, we are, we, we've prepared a response, uh, cause uh the, what uh, um. Uh, the Butters uh speaking to was uh the Verizon's marketing map.
Yep.
And there are disclaimers in that marketing map um that talk about uh where the areas are where we, we can be expected to provide service or where we're trying to provide service. But the accurate, actual coverage is from the plots that we provided to you.
Okay.
And those were concerns from the planning board and we were fully ready, you know, when we go before the planning board to address.
Yeah, no, and, and I, it's, it's, but we're, we're, if, you know, the use variance, I'm not wild about, but I don't think we have much choice. Uh, given the, the, the federal law. Uh, but we do, I think we, you know, I want to have the least impact when I'm granting a variance as possible. Um, to have it as least impactful as possible on the neighbors uh if we can. And that's why I would ask that it be moved further south and west. Um, to, you know, limit it to the two and then keep it, you know, further away from the property lines uh if possible. Um, so that most of the impacts are to the parcel that's getting the benefit of the rental amounts, that's all.
Yeah, and we're willing to take a look at that and come back with the proposed location.
But we have, I take one or two more people out there still.
What, what was your response to Dr. Labar's uh assertion that, that there were two people who have, two property owners who have more space. On their land. So I thought I heard you say that, that you had conducted. So I thought I heard you say that you had conducted an exhaustive search.
Yeah, I don't know who they are, where those locations are. I don't know. I don't know if anybody else on the team has that information either.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, Dr. Labar, if you have those names, provide those to the people at Verizon so that they could look at those sites in terms of what's there. But I don't know what the sites are.
I mean, she mentioned that they weren't in residential zones. So I'm not aware of anything that is outside of residential that would work for.
I mean, that area of town looks like it's pretty much either agricultural or residential. And it's not allowed in either of those zones currently, so. But if there is a site that might work better and have less impact on people, I'm willing to hear about it. But I also don't want to take some nebulous site that somebody may be willing to talk to somebody, but they're not able to work out a deal. I just need to, you know, know that, but. So those are the issues. I think they were looking for something in that southeast portion of town. And there are, you know, obviously, a lot of parcels, but people have to be interested and they have to be large enough to be able to provide the, you know, the coverage. You can't put it on a small building lot, you know, in the middle of a densely populated area. I think they have the least impact as possible.
Mark, Mrs. Richards is here.
Okay, yeah.
Hey, good evening. Marilyn Richards, three forty-two Pinehurst, also a town counselor. I was on the planning board when we created the bylaw for the telecommunications tower. I was on the planning board when Omni Point came in and we didn't have anything to protect the town. And needless to say, in a special permit, we didn't have a super majority vote, and that's why it ended up being a court proceeding. The actual location for that tower is a hundred percent better because it's really nestled in an area where they're not allowed, not a lot of residential homes. And so it was actually an okay site. I'm, I have a few things I just want to touch on quickly. The use variance. Our bylaw says it's not allowed in residential zone. I understand that. So that's why they're here. But our bylaw also says that we do not issue use variances, period. It's under the zoning board of appeal section, and it talks about a variance is a permission to depart from the literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw with respect to setback, side yard, frontage and lot size, but not involving use or structures.
Like, and we understand that.
I know that. And I know why we're here, and I'm not going to fight Big Brother. But the point is, it's frustrating when you work with the town and you try to establish laws and when you create the bylaw for the telecommunications section and you have legal advice while you're doing the bylaw, and we're told as long as you permit it in other sections, you can regulate it or prohibit it in others. So, you know, we're here because.
And we've run into the same thing with solar and we've run into it with telecommunications. They have these special acts that they preempt us. The federal government is the source of all power. And if they preempt you and decide that they want to preempt you because it's a national thing, they can do that. Am I happy about it? No, we lose a lot of control with that. But I also don't want to basically say, well, screw the federal government, put it in and have a court stick it in, and we have no protections for anybody. And we, you know, we really haven't done our job to protect the citizens in East Long Meadow. So I, that's why I'm trying to do.
And I'm not asking you to prohibit this. I'm not here because I'm vehemently opposed. I live out in the area and I don't have self-service either. But that being said, when I attended the planning board public hearing, there was some discussion when sixty-one A came up, there was some discussion about perhaps dividing some uses on the parcel or perhaps the tower area would be treated in one way. At least this is what I took from it. I submitted a question to the planning board and said, if the zoning board of appeals allows the variance and it becomes a permitted use in residential A, the zoning bylaw for residential A says that all permitted uses must be at least a minimum of twenty-five thousand square feet as well as have a hundred and forty feet of linear frontage. So I asked the planning board, how do those rules kick in if the zoning board of appeals says it's a permitted use on this parcel in residential A? I received a call back from the planning board chairman today. And he said, based on our town attorney, that if the zoning board of appeals issues a variance for the twelve, for this parcel, the variance is for the entire twelve acre parcel, for the entire parcel. Can you speak to that, Mark?
Well, I wouldn't think it would apply to the whole parcel applies to the project that we're dealing with because this is a leased area. This is not they're leasing a fifty by fifty in easements to get to that fifty by fifty. So that seems to me to be the area. Now, whether or not if you put those requirements on it, that it effectively would prevent a cell tower from being built anywhere in town because it's impossible to do that under the ordinance, you're going to get, the federal government is going to step in and stick something in there, whether we like it or not. So I suspect that what we're dealing with, however, the town still has input in terms of whether they want to preserve that in the use that it's in because the town could decide if the council decides they've got enough money with the community preservation act for open space or to protect that, they could buy that parcel of land or at least the portion that's being taken out of the use because there's a right of first purchase when you change the use from a protected use to a non-protected use for this area that you're going to be non-protecting the use on. And there'll be, if they don't exercise it, then there'll be either a rollback or a conveyance tax owned on that value back to the town if the town decides not to exercise their rights. And anything we would grant would have to be subject to the because you get notice to your board, the conservation commission, the board of assessors, and I assume the town council because it's a board of selectmen, then essence, you are now the board of selectmen, the town council, since the new town government's come into place. So I would assume you would get those notices and would make that decision. And if the board decides to buy that, there's nothing, you know, we can do to stop that. And you know, the variance would have to be conditioned on them getting through that procedure.
So if correctly, if you were to award a variance, you would limit fifty by fifty.
It'd be the fifty by fifties. Right. Well, it's a leased area that we're granting the variance to to allow them to put it on that parcel of land. Now, whether or not we want to put restrictions on the development of the rest of the parcel, I don't know. That's something that the board would have to consider. You know, impacting the rest of the piece to say, okay, if we're going to do this, then we want a radius around that on that parcel that that'll be left open. You know, so that won't be impacted in the area on that parcel. And that's something we would have to decide as a board, whether we would want to put some sort of a restriction that would limit uses on that parcel. You know, that might be adversely impacted in the future. So if that guy decided he wanted to put a subdivision on his parcel and put a bunch of houses very close to it, maybe that's not such a good idea. And we would, you know, but that's something we have the ability to put conditions on. Whether we would put those conditions, I don't know. That's that's something we'd have to consider.
I guess the reason why, you know, I'm even having this discussion with you is because it was pretty clear to me when I spoke to the chair of the planning board today, that the town attorney had said that the use would be applied to the entire parcel and public notice for your public hearing addresses.
With a three hundred feet, yes.
And then, and the planning boards, it addresses the twelve acre parcel. So I'm I'm just looking to see how the, actually, quite honestly, how the sixty-one A is going to, you know, fare for the town of East Long Meadow.
Yeah, and I don't have any control over that. That's up to those boards to do what they're going to do. And if they decide that they want to exercise that right. But once again, he's not taking the rest of that parcel out. It's the parcel, obviously, where he's putting his right of ways to service that and putting in the utilities and the actual fifty-foot area that he's actually going to be using.
Access to, the access to the area is from Meadowbrook Road all the way up.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. So that's the area that's impacted by this variance because that's what the lease covers that. The area to access it for the, the road to get there to bring the utilities in because he's got to have phone and electric back there. And he's got to have a sufficient access road. I didn't see anything from the police or fire that said, you know, we're not happy with the access road and emergency, you know, technicians. And, you know, and, you know, I'd want to find out how much usage of that access road. I suspect it's not a ton of usage that they go in there and they inspect it every so often. And then, you know, have to do upgrades on, and, you know, maintenance of the equipment every so often. But I can't imagine it's traffic coming and going on that on a regular basis.
Probably not. Well, I just appreciate if you could, I mean, if the town attorney gave this information to the planning board, I would rather have.
Yeah, I hadn't seen the town's opinion. That's why I had asked, because they had given us their use opinion. And I just wanted to make sure the town attorney did either agreed or didn't agree with it. And what the town attorney had to say for, we would have some direction. I just, I didn't see that report. So I would definitely want to see that before I would vote.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate.
Thank you. Are there anybody else waiting?
Yes, Mark, there's three more now. Mrs. Normandin coming in.
Okay. Mrs. Norman in there?
Yeah, hang on a minute. Yep, she's on her way now. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm sorry, it rebooted or something. I apologize. My name's Cindy Normandin. I live at five forty Summers Road. And I'm one of the butters. And as you know, I sent you the letter. So I agree with everything that John Bernie was saying. But one thing I just wanted to address was possible other sites that are actually in the residential A neighborhood but are not near houses. And there's two different people that I've talked to that are very interested in having the tower on their property. One's a thirty-three acre piece. It's on Summers Road across from Meadowbrook Farm owned by Jim Hayburn. He's interested in having the tower there. There's no houses anywhere near that property. There's a road that goes in there, et cetera. And then the other one is in the back of Squire Farm. The Baileys would be interested in having it there as well, which would not have any houses around it. So I just wanted to.
And I don't have a problem. It's so, we've at least got some named people who would give that information. Obviously, you've given it here. And if you have any contact information that Verizon could potentially contact those people, I just don't know. You know, how close they are to other residences. You've got that whole development where my own Crest Country Club there, those condos there, I don't know how far away those are from that.
Yeah, he's, he's got thirty-three acres, so it must be fairly far.
I don't know.
So I can pass the information on to Verizon.
That's what I'm saying. And whether it meets their technical requirements, I have no idea. So if it meets their technical requirements and it's feasible, maybe they can do something there. Maybe they can't. I don't know. But at least they can look at those and talk to those people and, and see what if it's something that they, that's feasible and whether they're willing to consider it. But at least you've got the names, Ellen, that you can give Verizon and someone can talk to them and see if they're potentially you know, willing to put it in. Because some people sometimes talk to people when it comes down to reality and.
Yeah, I understand that. It's just, it's such a kind of congested area to put it right there at a hundred and twenty-five feet. It's pretty close to some of the houses there.
Yeah, no, no. And I understand. I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to do is to have the least impact on the least number of people as possible. That is.
I'm going to put my phone number in the chat. So.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, and I appreciate that, Ms. Norman. And but those are things that I think we want to just make sure Verizon has done all its due diligence conclusively say yea or nay that this is the only site that meets our requirements. And, you know, because I don't know enough about the other sites. They look at it, the engineers will make determinations because there may be other things that may or may not impact it. I don't know. I don't know topography. I don't know if there's wetlands. I have no idea, you know, on those pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. There are a couple more people, I understand. Looks like I missed.
No, Kristen Betern.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hello, yes.
This is Ryan Proventure, five five four Summers Road.
Yep.
I'm abutting the property. I am opposed to the tower being put there, just like everybody is already exhausted, the same opinions. I agree with all the abutting neighbors. It's going to be like putting a big fish in a small fishbowl. The guy's got no trees around the tower. It's a cleared field. No matter where you put it, like the doctor said, someone's going to be affected. I just built this house on Summers Road. I mean, I couldn't even get in the building plans, I couldn't add a foot to my front porch. I mean, you can't park a truck in the driveway. There's so many laws that, you know, prevent you from doing stuff. I don't know how that this would be passed and fair to the neighbors.
And I understand. And that's why we're looking as much impact as we can.
All right, well, I just wanted to voice my opinion. And I don't know what's next, but I'll make sure.
That's fine. Thank you, Ryan.
That's all I got.
Yep, sorry. Yeah, one more.
One more, okay.
Hello.
Hello, yes. Say your name and address, please.
Yes, this is Joshua Labar, nineteen Silver Fox Lane, East Long Meadow.
Yep.
So just wanted to add just a couple of comments. I mean, it may be a mute point at this point, but you know, with the variances, just speaking against being in favor of them, just for two reasons. A, you know, I think it, by allowing these variances, just kind of sets a precedent for, you know, potentially having something like this happen. Again, looking at Verizon's map, it looks like you kind of have that same gap in coverage further down Parker Street, which is much more residential, which it sounds like at this point here, Verizon is just going to buddy up with the Fed and kind of get their way. So what does it look like a few years from now when they're trying to fill that gap in a much higher.
That's a concern that I've had. And that's why I asked the question when I kind of rolled on what's presented.
I understand. I just, I just wanted to make the comments around it. I just am concerned that, you know, it kind of opens up the floodgates for, from even more towers around the town that, you know, quite frankly, I'm on my phone all day, every day in the basement of my house at nineteen Silver Fox in this no-gap zone. And, you know, I can give you my boss's phone number. Very, I am never impacted by not having service. So just wanted to make the comments. I appreciate the time. Appreciate you trying to help us, us neighbors and and just try to have this be as least impactful as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that's it, Mark.
Okay, I guess, does the petition have any rebuttal?
We will look at the other locations of the site. We will look at the um other locations of the site. We will look at, if I, you know, get information on those other two sites, we will take a look at that. And um, and we'll be prepared to come back and.
Would you be willing to come back at our next uh meeting? I think which would be the, I don't have the exact date, but it's usually the second Monday at six thirty.
December thirteenth.
December thirteenth. Would that give you enough time to look at all that, those things, Ellen?
Um. David, does that work for you?
Well, it works for me.
Okay. All right.
So at least you could contact those other people and determine. Owner and about if you you can't work some other site that you can, you know. With this somewhere on the site that might be a little bit more palatable, that's all.
Yeah, okay, I just to make sure that did give gave it enough time to talk to the landlord. So it looks like that it will be okay.
So we'll continue this hearing, uh, if, well, we're, you know, entertain a motion to continue this hearing. Uh, to uh six thirty P M Zoom um on December thirteenth.
Mark, I'd just like to add that if there's any kind of health risks and concerns, because that's been brought up by uh opposers. That should be researched and brought out.
Yeah, there were some articles that were referenced uh in the uh on the health concerns. Uh, if you looked at the website, I read one of them that sort of downplayed that that concern. Uh, but I I'd be willing to read the articles both ways. Uh, if the abutters have articles. That they want to uh, you know, produce that show adverse impacts. Um, and Verizon has ones that said there are no adverse impact, a very slight impact.
Well, if I could, I could just speak a minute shortly about briefly about that. So, um, you know, we do have uh. The license, our federal license that we have to operate under, which sets out the the parameters on how much R F we can admit. We are very, well, well, well below that level. Um, and um, again, we have to maintain that to uh maintain our license. Uh, the Telecommunications Act does um preclude municipalities from um denying. Uh, power permits based on perceived health um effects, so, um, but again, that doesn't mean.
That's why I would want to see specific data rather than some theory that that it is. If in fact, there is some actual perceived, I'm not sure. I haven't read anything.
That is a my question that came up as a planning board and, you know, we were prepared to, we'll be prepared to address it there. Um, if you want to provide.
I I was gonna say, I don't, I agree with you. I'm not minimizing the concern, but it's really not for.
No, no, I'm just saying, I I'm I'm, if somebody wants to submit. At the next hearing, such things, I'm willing to entertain and read the stuff just so that we're making, you know. I'm not sure what it's going to say, and I'll look at it and weigh it.
Well, to the extent that we're stopped from denying it based on that, it's not really relevant. I mean, it would be intellectually if you're curious, but I mean, from our.
You know, it's health and safety.
Yeah, no, I would, I would look at articles both ways because I I've been involved in the past and there are articles uh. Both ways, I'd like to see the person who wrote it, et cetera, because you get some of these articles, you get them off the internet. And they may or may not be so reliable.
And I did see something specific from American Cancer Society that did place where where it came off of for those towers, and it is below the.
The. That that's what I read in the thing that I read on that one. I didn't read all the ones they cited, but I looked at the American Cancer Society. It was below the numbers that they had concerns with, but, you know, I don't know. Uh, I haven't read all the other ones, and I don't know if somebody else has an article that was published. Uh, by some medical journal or something that that is, you know, credible and.
If it's the case that we're not to consider that under state law, wh- why are we?
Well, I'm not sure. I think it's she's saying it it I'm 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 trying to, I, I'm not sure you you can't consider it at all. You just can't make your decision. Solely based on that. That's just, I think it's a factor, but I'm not, I don't think it's a major.
All right, I'll, we'll provide you with, I can copy what I provide to the planning board.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Perfect.
And if the butters want to give us something different, then I'm willing to read it, you know, not saying I'm going to say yay or nay on it, that's all.
Well, I I seconded that motion.
Yeah, so I'll take a vote. Um, please raise your hand. Uh, all all in favor, raise your hand on the board.
Hi.
A note that is unanimous, so that it's going to be, this hearing will be continued to December thirteenth at six thirty P M on Zoom. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
We we've got another hearing coming up. Um, I'm going to have to recuse myself on this one because I represent. And not on this particular petition, but I I work with Mr. Um, Kapua. Uh, and I represent him on a number of other ventures. Um, so I really have a conflict in this case, so I can't really sit on it. Um, but, you know, I've looked at the material, so I'm I'm not going to participate, and I don't want to adversely influence anybody one way or the other. Uh, in terms of of what's there. So, but we only have four members, so someone should just let him know that you'll need all four of you to approve it. This is the one on uh, uh, Old Farm. So, if I may leave the meeting with everybody's permission.
You can leave.
Do you want to appoint somebody to serve in your stead?
Yeah, I mean, Charles is probably second in command in terms of being here the longest, so I I would say, Charles, I I would have you be the uh.
I'll make the motion that you appoint Charles and uh you can be on your way.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I'll be on my way and thank you.
See you later, Mark.
Okay. Bye-bye.
We do have five, so we're we're good.
Okay, we have the five. Okay, good, because I'm going to be leaving, so it's just on the others, so we have enough people. Yeah, okay. Yep, everybody's here, so you're all, you should be all set.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
See you, Mark. The hearing's still open, right? So do we have the petitioner?
Uh, the petitioner would be, hang on a second.
It should just be Ralph in the um attendees list.
Ralph?
Yep.
And? Who else did you say?
I think that's it, unless he um, if I was asked if anybody else.
I'm here.
Okay, you have video?
I can see everybody, yes.
No, can we see you, please?
Um.
You know, you know how to start your video?
Bingo.
There you go. Thank you.
All right, well, we've got uh four, actually, we've got five members, so we'll get started. Um. Bethany, do you want to read? Right, I can read it. I have it. You've got it. If you want. So, Islamic Zoning Board of Appeals, a whole public hearing on November eighth at six thirty via Zoom web link listed. Cases E V twenty twenty twenty-one dash five, a petition for variance on Islamic zoning bylaws. Dimensional and density regulations, you can hear me right?
Yes.
I'll make sure I was on uh that off on mute, sorry. We would have stopped you before. Dimensional density regulations, table three point two for twenty plus or minus foot relief from a thirty-five foot. Side yard setback for a covered porch at one oh eight Old Farm Road, just a parcel forty-two, twenty-one, twenty-seven. To the residence, uh, A A zoning district, application Sodi Incorporated, uh, Carol Roth Kappua. Uh, sixty Blueberry Hill Road, Long Meadow, Mass. Uh, information regarding this is on file, and this was published on ten twenty-one. And again, on ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. All right, so what we'll do is we'll have whoever's speaking in favor of the petition go first. And we'll have um anybody that wants to speak against it go second. Um, there'll be questions from from the board if applicable, so is there anybody that will, and then we'll hopefully take a vote on it. Anybody in um here present, I s- I assume Mr. Kapua, this, that's you, Ralph?
Yes.
To speak in favor of the petition?
Uh, yes, I do, and I've seen, um, I've also submitted five other letters of support.
We've got those, those are part of the package, and and Bethany, we should probably label those. Um, package as exhibit one, and then all the letters in support, if it's two through six. All right. So, Mr. Kapua, you want to state your name and then address again?
Yep, uh, it is Ralph Kapua, uh, currently residing at sixty Blueberry Hill Road, Long Meadow. It's a temporary residence until I build this particular residence on Old Farm.
All right, you want to state the reasons why you think the variance is?
Um, as I, as I mentioned in the application. This particular parcel uh is literally cut in half by a um, by a stream, an intermittent stream. Conservation has granted the permission to put in a driveway and and put the house in. But because of the location of the stream and the constraints of the wetlands. The house is literally up against the thirty-five foot side yard setback with no ability to put a deck. Of any sort.
Well, this is just started, and it's going to be a few minutes, so.
The um, the 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 property. Has quite a few um issues. Grading is one of them. There's a a fifteen-foot uh grade differential from the right side of the lot to the left side of the lot. Um, right behind the house, from the top of um, top of wall or from the finished floor. To grade is about a seven, a little bit more than a seven-foot drop. So we can't even. You can't even have a slider or open up a slider. I mean, you'll fall right out. Um, so thi- this is a very difficult lot. Uh, we can't move the house in any other location. Uh, we can't put it before the the stream because it cuts the lot right in half, and there's no other space to put the house.
So you haven't built the house yet? You're you're.
No.
Okay, so you get the house and then the and then the deck would be the variance request.
Correct, and one of the reasons why the house, another reason why the house is right up against the side yard setback. Is that the. The subdivision requires, the restrict, the covenants are that it's twenty-eight hundred square feet. Uh, so in order to even meet that twenty-eight hundred square feet, it, we are literally pushed right up against that side yard setback.
The entire physical structure of the house, though, is within the setbacks?
The, yes.
It's just the jack.
Correct.
All right. Is there any questions, Mr. Kapua?
Um, no, I I mean.
Any questions on the on the board of Mr. Kapua?
No, I I think this sounds like a a fairly routine need for a variance based on topography. Um, it uh, that's what it sounds like to me. I I don't have uh the site plan in front of me, um, but um. Uh, if if you're forced to put a structure uh with any utility on a site, due to. Topography, shape, or soils, uh, you know, you generally meet the criteria, so. Uh, I I don't see anything that would tell me otherwise at this point.
I agree with Dan. I couldn't, I had actually looked at the um. The uh proposal, and I could see all the um grades in the the wetlands, and it does, it kind of puts you in a tight spot. All right, is is there anybody else to speak in favor of the variance? Anybody else in the audience?
So, uh, Charles, Charles, I only can see a hand raised. I have no way to know if it's in favor or against.
Well, we'll find out.
Yep.
Hi, good evening. This is Mary Chris Arneson. I'm a home owner at Twenty-Four Old Pasture Drive, which is next to the property. Where the build is going to take place, and I have a couple of questions. I understand that Mr. Kapua came to my home. When I was actually out of the country and um had a discussion with my husband, who I believe signed a petition supporting. But when we actually received the notice of public hearing, the wording in the public hearing notice was different from what my husband's understanding was. At the time of the meeting, I'm not sure if my other neighbors have the same discussion, had the same discussion. I haven't uh raised it to them. But when the variance was requested, at least orally to us, it was related to a deck. And now that I read the notice that came across for the case, it's referencing a covered porch.
It, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. It is not a covered porch.
Well, it is what is stated in the notification, so.
I understand that, and it will not be a covered porch. In order to even do a covered porch, that means I'd have to like a a concrete. Foundation there and everything else, and it that's not even feasible because of grades and whatnot, so it is not a covered porch.
Okay, so so that's really the main reason why I came this evening was to raise that issue because I'm concerned about concrete piers or foundation. Given the wa- wetlands and the issue that we could potentially have for the grading and the impact to our property. You know, obviously, we all know the water table is very high in this neighborhood, in the town at large, and so, you know, we do have the stream that runs through our backyard. It is probably wet three hundred fifty days a year. It does have a very short dry period in the um. In the summer months, but even today, the water's flowing. I was out, went around the neighborhood today. There was actually water exiting the property. As it stands today, probably because of the removal of um the trees and and shrubbery. But it was, water was exiting the property down the um, down the uh, the cutaway there on the pavement. Um, the other question then that I had was, I did hear you state that the entire footprint of the home is within the setback. The surveyor that was out here this week expressed that it required actually a five-foot variance for the footprint of the house. So I'm not sure if that was a misunderstanding, but I I just want to be crisp on. You know, whether or not the actual footprint of the home is within the allowed um, the, within the allotment. Or if it does require a five-foot variance, as he'd expressed.
In order to really get twenty-eight hundred square feet for a ranch. Um, I'm respectfully requesting five feet of maybe a thirty-foot section of the house. To actually go into the side yard setback.
Um, so is that part of today's zoning variance request? Because I didn't see that articulated in the letter either.
I I believe it is in the letter.
Uh, but I I thought you just answered the, someone on the board asked the question as to whether or not you were fit within the setbacks, and that was, maybe it was Brian. And I thought you answered affirmatively that the dwelling was going to be situated within the setbacks.
It it is, uh, the entire, well, I'm sorry, e- except for, and and I believe I put it in the letter. Um, a- and I did. It it is in the letter. I I'm looking right at it in one of my responses. Uh, literally a five-foot section of the house. Uh, just where the dining area and the kitchen are, which is about thirty feet long, uh, is five feet into the side yard setback.
And and I'm, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that's in any way fatal because the purpose of a. Of a variance under these conditions and with the reasons that you have would support. Um, that, but what's important is that the petition articulate the relief you. Are seeking and that the decision reflect exactly what that relief is. In other words, it needs to demonstrate. How far into the setback you're going, and the board needs to understand what it's voting for, that it's voting. I- i- it's making a decision or or failing to make a decision, as the case may be, uh, of of an encroachment into a setback.
Uh, y- and you are correct. Um, and like I said, I, it it is a very small section of the house. Um, five feet that would be going into the side yard setback and a fifteen-foot deck. Um, and I believe that I said, um, in one of the questions. Uh, that was part of my answer. That was submitted.
Bethany, do we have plans?
Um, there should be plans, um. I was not aware that the five-foot variance request was included in this variance. That is why the. I was not aware that the five foot variance request was included in this variance. That is why the only relief requested. Under this public hearing is for the deck. Um. Ralph, that would have had to have been included in your initial conversations with me so that I could have included that into the. Public, uh, the legal advertisement in the notice to abutters.
Yeah, because a variance has to be, you know, we got to make sure we do those exactly right. Because it's, you know, it's a lot of relief under, under zoning and other people who come later are going to be expected to do. This administratively the right way, so we got to make sure we do it.
Okay, um.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm only seeing the same thing. It's just, it's the, it's the deck area. I did see your note in there about. Five foot portion of the house, but it's not, I don't see it as an official request.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't entirely clear and, and, you know, I think that. Dan's right, I mean, um. I mean, clearly you described the, 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 the topography and, and nature of the, the relief that's requested, and I think it all makes sense. That, that, the question, we've got one of your neighbors here that, that's, that's raising. Concerns because she didn't know what was being presented. Um. So I think what, what probably would make sense is, you know. Repost it. Uh, and then, and then have a vote on, on it after we've given all of the appropriate notice because I, my fear is. Another neighbor comes out of the woodwork, we've, we've approved something without the proper notice, right? Would they, would they have an issue? I don't know. It's five feet, right? Um, but I, I, I'd hate to, I'd hate to get, I'd hate to get a challenge because we didn't provide proper notice.
So we've been residents here now for just over eight years. I've never seen a homeowners association notification, a meeting. I don't know if a variance can be requested for a smaller square footage, um, home for that piece of property, given the, the. Inability to fully develop it with, given the fact that it's split. I mean, that's obviously one of the concerns that we have is the fact that there's. You know, significant water pass through that goes over ultimately into the quarry. Um, you know, I understand that the, apparently the homeowners association, I'd have to pull my legal documents from my closing. Because the HOA here isn't as strict as where I came from. Or at least my understanding is. I'm sorry, Charles, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you all set? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm fine, sir. Thanks.
Um, so I think, I think we could probably handle this in a couple of different ways, Mr. Kapua. I think we could vote on the fifteen foot variance for your desk, for the desk. It's been a late, late nighter. The, the deck. Um. Or what you could do is amend. For, um, we, withdraw your petition. File an amended, give proper notice, and then we voted on it altogether. Um.
That would probably, that would probably be the best way.
I think, I think withdrawing and then refiling amended would be the cleanest. That way it's all done in, in. In one filing and you're going to have to come back for us if you need, if you want the five feet on the house anyways. Um.
They're going to need, they're going to.
You reconfigure the house.
Yeah, unfortunately, we, I, I wish I could. I, I just, there's no room. To do that.
No. You could do it different way. Yeah, I know you can do it. But.
No, well, with all due respect, there really isn't any room to do it with.
And, and nobody's disagreeing with you. I, I, what I think is, is what we, what, what, what we're trying to avoid is somebody coming up and saying, hey. I thought it was just about a deck. Right? That's why I signed, I signed the, the, uh, the, 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 the letter. That's why I didn't show up to the hearing. Um, so, I mean, I don't, I, I, I think you've, you've displayed it, but I think what we need to do is provide proper notice to.
And if, I, I could be incorrect, but I think. The letters of support. Do say twenty feet.
Well, you, you know, whether they do or whether they don't, the fact remains that it isn't clear, otherwise. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And, and I think it's also important that the decision be based on a request that is properly made. So, I mean, what I'm used to, and I hate to say this, but I'm just telling you. You know, what I'm used to is seeing a drawing that shows a house, that shows the dimensional requirements, that shows the setbacks. And that shows the relief you need, so that we as a board can look at that and understand really quickly what it is we're being asked to do. And whether it makes any sense and also applying that to the concerns that the abutters have like Mary here. Um, but I, I, I don't even have a drawing, at least I don't remember seeing one, that, that shows me what you're, what you're trying to do, so. If you make a new application, with, 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 with a drawing, uh, and a description of the exact relief that you're requesting. I think it would be a little easier for us.
I believe I submitted two drawings. One. With the whole conservation plan. Showing. What they were approving and one with the. With the outline of the house. And the deck and the, and the five foot. Uh, section of the house. So I know I submitted them and I know that the letters that were signed and I can, and I can actually read it.
Yeah, no, I see the letters and I think, I think you're probably, I think, I think you're right on the letters, but the notice that, that we provided the public was, was. Right, Bethany, that didn't, that, that didn't say that there was going to be a five foot house setback.
Right, it was not clear to me that there was also a five foot variance request, which would have been, had to have been, um. It's a separate request. Um, and in the zoning determination, you requested variance relief for covered porch with inside yard setback. Um, and I do see it in your, in your request, but that should have been an initial conversation. That we had to clarify exactly what request you were, what relief you were requesting. Um, variances are not, um.
Listen, I think.
Yeah. And I, and I apologize, I, I apologize. I figured because we said twenty feet. That was going to be like a twenty foot deck and now I said, okay, well, instead of a twenty foot deck. You know, it, does it make sense to go five with the house and fifteen with the deck, still equaling the twenty feet? So, I, you know, I, I apologize in that regard.
And that's where we need, we need clarity, actually, to help you. That's, that, that, you know, because heaven forbid somebody comes after, makes you tear down the house and move the five feet, right? So, uh, you know, i- i- if I were in your shoes and we can do whatever you'd like, um, I think, you know, clearly you can withdraw with, with, without any prejudice. Um, refile it with the five foot for the house. I don't have a drawing in the package that we've got, Bethany. So I think Dan's right. I think having a, 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 a drawing, a survey. That shows where the house is, where the house is proposed, what the, what the setback requirement is and, and what you're looking for on the house. Then the proposed deck, I think that would, that would help everybody.
He did submit a plan. Um, it must not have been included in that email correspondence.
I, I didn't see one. I was beginning to think it was my fault that I overlooked it, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, I know I submitted two plans. So with all, you know, I apologize, but I, I know I submitted two plans, uh, full size plans. Uh, one, the original plan from conservation showing a colonial, um. I, I can't really do a colonial. I mean, I've got a bad hip. I'm going to be going for another hip replacement at some point. And I've got a very bad back, so that's the reason why I'm doing a ranch. And in order to get twenty-eight hundred square feet. I, I'm literally up against all the side setback yards, uh.
Well, we're, we're not here, we're, we're not here to control your architectural choices. We're, we're just here to give you a variance if you give us. The tools that we need to give it to you. So, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Graves would be clear what, what he'd like to see you do. Uh, so why don't we, why don't we do that?
Okay, so. What would, what do I need to do? Withdraw?
So I think you, you withdraw the current. Without prejudice. I think then Bethany will help walk you through how to get it, how to, how to redo it. Get the proper notice out and then, and then you come back. Bethany, do we have time to get it on the agenda that, and, and. So, so you don't, uh, let me ask the question. Do we have time to get it on the agenda for December? And we can make this the first one.
We know the other one's going to take like three hours.
That could take, it could take a little while, yeah.
Demonstrated extraordinary patience tonight.
Not as much as my wife and the kids downstairs, but.
Uh, yes, we should have time to get it onto the thirteenth, um.
Mr. Kapua, does that make, does that make sense? Is it?
Just. Um.
So it would, would, it would be a complete refiling, complete withdrawing without prejudice, which means that you can refile at any point.
And, and he called, we also wouldn't charge him again. He didn't have to pay another fee, right?
Right.
All right, so.
So we would have to do another advertising?
Yes.
Now, we know, we got to do that. That's part of the whole reason we got the problem that we got. If you're going to agree, if you agree with, with Chairman Gray's, uh, suggestion, I'm going to make a motion. Uh, that we allow you to withdraw your petition without prejudice and return at the date. Uh, that was just mentioned, uh, with materials and, and we'll proceed from there.
I second that.
Okay.
I, I, I think that, that makes the most sense. All right, we've got a motion that's, that's made and seconded. All in favor to accept Dan's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Close, I think it was unanimous.
Okay.
All right, so we'll see you back here. We'll, Beth, you can put number one on the agenda. Yeah. Um, and, uh, and like, like, I think, I think everybody's in agreement. This, this is why we have. The topography and nature and keeping with the neighborhood, everything that you're doing, everything that I've heard makes perfect sense for a variance. Um, in this, in this circumstance, so. Uh, we'll get the notice the right way and you'll, and you'll be off to the races.
Okay, thank you.
All. All right.
Good night.
All right, hold on, we need a motion to close the, the hearing. I second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, guys. All right, I'm off for dinner. See ya.
Good job. Thank you.
All right.